I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge, and then Commissioner Patton, if you'll do our prayer from the side, Charles behind.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious and holy Father in heaven, we approach thy throne this evening in a humble manner, ask your blessings upon this gathering that we have assembled to discuss the business of our city. Bless each one of us with patience and wisdom, and may we make the best decision for the citizens and for all concerns, that we might make the best decision within the regulations and the laws and things that we need to be obeyed by. Direct our steps, not as tonight, but in our life, keep it from the evil one, in Christ's name. Amen.
Okay. First, I have support of minutes.
Make a motion, we approve minutes.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Those in favor, say "aye." Post same. Motion passes. Next item is the bills.
I make a motion with "aye."
We have a motion, second. Those in favor, say "aye." Post same. Motion passes. I'm going to break away from the agenda just a minute to allow DeNietra with the Department of Transportation, our Madisonville office, to talk a little bit about Main Street.
Yes, I moved way up the agenda, thank you. I guess it's, I came here tonight, we met on-site this morning on a project to discuss the Main Street repairs that were, it's more than repairs, we're reconstructing Main Street, is what we're doing. So let me give a little background before I go into the current status of the project. The reason that we're reconstructing Main Street is because of this terrible ongoing condition of the pavement. And I think everyone would agree that the pavement condition has not been satisfied during a long time. And that's because of the condition of the subgrade, the subsurface, the soils, just when the road was constructed, the dirt that they used was not standard that we would use today. And so after years and years, long before I was in my position, we've always just patched and patched, and received complaints and patched some more. We've received some non-standard funding to fully fix the road, to completely dig out the subsanding material and put good material back in. And so the mayor introduced me, let me introduce myself again. I'm DeNietra Henderson. I'm the chief district engineer in Madisonville for the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. And we cover 12 counties, including Ohio County. And so this morning, we met with the contractor because, as any construction project goes, roadway, your house, wherever you are, there's things that come up that aren't what you expected when you were designing. And so we're trying to work through some of those issues that we have the least impact to the people that use the roadway. But the thing is, you can't rebuild a roadway in the exact same place without some impact. And so the plans were developed last year, it went out to bid late last year, and we are already under contract with Scotty's for some certain provisions in the contract that I found out this morning the mayor and Larry, Mr. Conder, was not aware of. And so I offered to come and try to give an update to you all, because I'm sure you get a lot of questions about the status of Main Street, since it's in the city. And so I have a list, and I will read them, because it's a list of the exact closures that are planned for Main Street. And so I'll try to get through these, forgive me for reading.
Do you have a copy?
And so West First Street is US 62 coming from this side, and then just City Street, First Street on the other side. West First Street, which is the, well, West First Street, they have to relocate the sanitary sewer force main. Is that a city force main? Is that?
It's regional wastewater.
Regional wastewater. And so that has to be reconstructed or moved, because the drainage pipes that we're installing need to go where the force main is. So that's something that they'll be doing soon. The contractor has given us their schedule, and I will share that today, but just keep in mind that weather and materials will definitely impact this. But I usually give more general in two to three weeks, but I'll give you the exact dates that the contractor has given us, because I know it's an area of interest to a lot of people right now. So Scotty's, their foreman is telling us that on March 20th through March 26th, West First Street will be closed for seven days. The westbound lane of US 62 will stay open. So one lane will stay open. The eastbound lane will be closed. So one lane open, but you can't go the other way.
Will we be able to get a copy of that?
I will give this to them, I will give this to you, or she can make copies, yes.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
I shouldn't, but I want to, because I know you'll get a lot of questions.
I know I can't write all this down.
No, we'll give you a copy. I just got it a few minutes before the meeting myself. So seven days, westbound will be closed, eastbound, westbound open, eastbound closed. First Street, which is the east side of US 62, it will be closed the entire duration of the seven days. And so US 62, which is the west side of that one, will have at least the one lane open. So that's the first phase of the closures. Second phase is a full closure between First Street and Fourth Street, a full closure of Main Street. It's two blocks of Main Street, and it's a 16-day closure.
You said between First and Fourth?
First and Fourth.
It's how many days, 16?
16 days. They expect that closure to begin on April 17th. This is why the mayor moved me up, so I could get out of here. So they plan to close that April 17th. Now, we're still a month off of that date, so that date, I wouldn't be surprised if it changed a little bit. But now they've scheduled these dates based on trying to get the job completed on time. And so they expect to close that April 17th and reopen on May 8th. Now, the closure is 16 calendar days. It is a lot of work to do in those 16 days, and I don't expect them to get it done early. It will be tight for them to be done on time. And so, of course, if that April 17th date moves, then the May 8th date will also move. So they'll begin just north of the First Street intersection, and they'll end just south of the West Fourth Street intersection. And the reason for that, so we were talking about the dirt and the soil underneath the pavement that was used. When you see that they're digging up under the sidewalks now, that, what they're doing now is putting in 24- and 30-inch pipes, and putting in new boxes to collect the water, and then putting the pipes in between them. And the soil under there, they found tree roots, they found bricks, just things that you wouldn't typically. And now, we're hoping that they don't have those, that the road does not have those same things over it. Many times, they would waste the less desirable material under the sidewalk, so we're hoping that we don't reach that under the road. But the bottom line is, if we don't want to keep having recurring potholes on Main Street, we need to dig out the floor material and put it back good.
How far down do you go?
So we'll go down, we've got 12 inches of rock wrapped in fabric, so they'll put down fabric. They've got a geotech fabric, a geotech grid that they're using. They use that same product in Morgantown in front of McDonald's on US 231 there. The material was pumping a lot, and they were running their equipment over it. And so they use this geotech grid on that as well, and so we'll be putting that down here as well. So it's the fabric, and then the grid, and then 12 inches of rock, and then we'll have our typical asphalt section with the base, a few inches of base, and then the surface.
Oh, these two feet.
I didn't do the back.
It's not deep enough.
It will not be enough to get all of the floor material out. I think everybody, when we met this morning here, we all agree to that. But with the grid, you can bridge the floor material and keep it from pumping.
I hope.
Well, I live in Moritz Town, and I can tell you that the surface in front of the McDonald's is still holding, so I'm optimistic.
How long has it been since that was worked, no?
10 years, at least. Enough time.
I've seen Main Street dug up, down eight feet, and it's awful. Awful.
We're afraid it will be the same, but we feel like if we're just patching and patching, it's just costing us a lot of money. Our crews are in the road and in danger a lot more. And then you are having to deal with our crews patching, and it just looks bad. That is the first full closure, and we have to do that because we can't remove the roadway and traffic element, obviously. And they can't work with one lane. And so that's the purpose, when you see the closure, that's what they'll be doing, is just removing all of that. Part of it that has the cracks across the road, there's concrete pavement under that, that will have to all come out. And so, just, it will take time. So just trying to get this to you all's attention now, so that when it happens, then we know it's going on. And so that's the first closure between First Street and Fourth Street. Once they complete that, they'll wait a few days, and then they'll localize over between Fourth Street and Seventh Street, and have another 16-day closure to do those few blocks. And they anticipate that that will happen May 10th, so that's two days after, and they have the weekend in between there. And then, if that closes on time, the opening date will be May 31st. And they have big stars on here that says subject to change, so. And it's the same notes on that, they'll be allowed 16 calendar days to work. So I did not bring a plan set, if you have specific questions. But I did just want to give you an update on the progress, where we are now, and we did our best to save the decorative sidewalk from the street skate project, because we know that's important to the city.
The detour between, during no time that Main Street is totally closed, be down West 62, to Ridcrede, and back up.
So the contractor is supposed to work on the detour. And so I would expect they'd reach out to the city, Mr. Conder, and try to work that out, but that seems like a reasonable detour. And I think the bigger truck traffic, or just anyone going to Walmart, they may hop on the parkway and go around and not have to use the city streets. So we may have a formally signed detour that way, and then locals will use the city streets to maneuver.
Okay.
What about the, and we spoke of this morning, what's the plan for those homes and businesses in the stretch between Fourth and Seventh? Because that's the only place that doesn't have access from the rear on some of them.
Yes, we talked about that specifically, the pharmacy this morning, and then the other home this morning. It is in our plans, the contractor is required to provide access to all the businesses and homeowners at all times. And we reminded them, they know this, they've worked on a lot of jobs, and it is up to them to determine how they provide access. Now, that access will likely be on gravel, on rock. They can't keep a paved access to the pharmacy all the time. But they will, what they will do is, in advance of this closure on May 10th, they'll reach out to those business owners and talk through what their access will look like. I know the pharmacy has two entrances, so they'll just close one at a time, but then the house there, they'll work with that property owner on when they need to get in and out that they know of, and they'll keep it open for then, maybe work when they're gone, and they have it open by the time they expect to be back. So that's something that we do. It's not ever fun, but we can never fix the road if we don't go through this part of it.
Well, I appreciate the fact that it was in the contract with the contractor, that they do have to, I mean, I knew there had to be something, but didn't know how it was.
And they have steel plates also, that we can use when, to try to keep them accessed that way also.
All right. And one reason why I asked for this, it's sort of a twofold question. Because I work for the Board of Education, and I deal with transportation with the buses a lot. So I would like for our transportation director just to know in advance what we're going to be looking at.
Yeah. I don't mind leaving this with her.
Appreciate that so much, and Chris Stafford will appreciate it, too.
Yeah. All right, well, I apologize to the inconvenience, but I am excited to see the finished surface, and we won't have to work on it for a long time.
Thank you very much.
And then it's going to be from Seventh to the other 62? Is that the next?
I don't think this project covers that section.
Gotcha.
We were just trying to get the downtown portion that we were having continued pavement, maintenance issues with.
Well, that's part of the issue that you and I discussed this morning, because that's one of the things that's been told, that it's going to be just milled and resurfaced from Seventh to 62 East.
That was the original plan, but we were able to get the additional money to dig it out and replace all the drainage, and just try to resolve these strange issues for a long time. You asked me about the bridge this morning on Liberty Road. Our engineer was asking for money to put in an aluminum box cover there, but that was not approved. And so when it warms up this summer, and dries out this summer, then they'll bring some equipment in and clean that structure out. But the water still flows through it, but we can get it cleaned out and just help.
Okay.
We're about to sneak out, unless you all have more questions.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask a question about, about Ruskel Road? Can I ask a question about that railroad bridge there? To her?
She won't want anything to do with the railroad bridge.
Well, it goes under the north and south of the railroad tracks. Over Ruskel Road, it's nice flowing in the ditch on the north side. On the south side, it's totally collapsed.
Is this a county road? You know?
I don't know, where's the state road start?
State road starts after, the state road goes to the railroad tracks, county road starts after the railroad tracks, right? On First Street down here.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure the state goes to the railroad tracks, after the railroad tracks, it's county. I'm almost 100% sure of that.
So the state side of it would be the north side of it, which is maintained well.
South side of it.
South side.
County.
It's county.
The state's not on the north side. The north side is First Street, it's on the north side of the railroad.
That's where she's talking about, isn't it? That's the one that's clean.
But that's not the state. The state would be on the south side, once you cross railroad tracks going towards Liberty Road.
No, that would be county, wouldn't it?
No, because Liberty Road's a state highway.
Liberty Road's a state highway?
Yeah. They changed it over a few years ago.
Oh, I didn't know that. Well, then I'll take.
So then that would be in her ground?
Yeah.
Sure, I see, I see. I'll show you. Right, thank you all.
Thanks. Thank you so much.
Okay. Next item is the second reading of the KU franchise. We did a first reading last month, and my recommendation is just to request to leave it at the same as it's been all along. I know they requested a reduction. I know funding we have to deal with on everything is going on.
You want to leave it?
I make a motion that we leave it the same as it was.
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, she did. She made the motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Do you have any comments?
You want to leave it the same, so 3%?
It would have worked before.
In 20, 20 years, 3%.
Those in favor, say "aye." Post same. Motion passes. Second reading dealing with the water deposits.
Move to approve second reading of the order for the water deposits.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say "aye." Post same. Motion passes. Next item, one under new business. Item number one is the proclamation for Arbor Day. This is part of the Tree City USA, and part of the Sessos Centennial event, and part of what we spoke with the ladies from the last meeting. So we just need this approved, this resolution approved. We've done it for the last nine or 10 years.
I make a motion, we approve Arbor Day.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say "aye." Post same. Next item's a Tourism Commission board member would like to put up, we have a vacancy on there, and this is one we've been working on for some time, since Black last summer with this particular individual. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll get back to you, okay?
All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to put up Kendall Brandon as a member of the Tourism Commission Board.
Did you say Kendall?
Kendall.
I make a motion that we approve Kendall as a member of the Tourism Board.
I'll second.
We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say "aye." Post same. Motion passes.
Get a question? Now, do you have to be, do you have to live in the city limits of Beaverton to be on Tourism Commission? Okay, I wondered about that, I didn't know for sure.
Next item is the property maintenance ordinance that we gave out. Last month, everybody looked at, and entertained a motion for a first reading, so then we can have more detailed workstations to finalize it.
I make a motion, we accept the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say "aye." Post same. Motion passes.
So are you planning for us to have a work session? That's what I said, I would love for us to be able to.
So everyone to talk about, you know, go over it line by line. It's pretty in-depth.
Almost too much for my age to understand.
Next item's blacktop for the parking lot at the park. We did receive a grant to help pay for that. But the downside is, since the first quote came in, the price of it has gone up. It was, I think, at $182,000, or $160,000. Now it's looking at $199,000 for it, of which we have about $90,000 grant to go towards that, and then ARBA funds to finish that off. But we'll need approval for this new quote from Scotty's.
Are they doing the whole parking lot? Are they doing any up around the, like where the buses parking stop? Are they getting all that up there?
Everything.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we accept the blacktop, follow the grant.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say "aye." Post same. Motion passes. You've got the two items on here, the police department stats and the fire department stats. I think that's something that's been in everybody's pocket, yeah. So unless you have something to add to that.
I think you all got those last month, and packed, or stacked, so just make mention of those, that we did present them to the commission this year. I'm not going to read over them all. Y'all, y'all, if you got any questions, just ask me about it.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. We've got some policies and procedures, we've got some policies that need to change. Part of the policies, there's four policies that need to be updated, eight policies that have been added. Of the policies updated is vehicle pursuit, currier transport, search and seizure of residents, stop, arrest, and search of persons. And then the policy added is off-duty active, by-space policing, emergency call location information requests, sexual assault kits, suspect identification procedures, early intervention system, community engagement, and property and evidence management. I think all of you have a list, so we just need a motion to update those four and add those eight. Are we going to do them one at a time, or do them all at the same time? What we're looking at?
I don't see a reason why we can't do them all at one time.
I would hope so.
Policy updates.
I would hope so. I move to approve the policy updates and additions.
Do we have a motion, a second? Any further discussion? Those in favor, say "aye." Post same. Motion passes. David, do you have anything at all, David?
I've got a couple things. I want to give you the stats, you guys got the stats in your package. If you have any questions, just reach out to me. The generator grant from last year, the generator was finished and installed today, it's up and going, so it's good to go. Last year, we applied for four separate grants, AED, Ford gas, and here, the thermal engine camera, as well as battery, or electric catcher, which I like. We received all four grants, no contribution from the city, and total between the four grants, we're looking at about $25,000 to $27,000 in equipment that we got. That's all we got.
Good deal. Appreciate it, thank you. Okay, next item is something new, as far as you all are aware of. I got a call from Mark Lloyd with Congressman Guthrie's office last week, or week before, wanting some, about some information on some funding potential and possibilities through federal appropriations. And I've got a resolution in here that I'd like to get passed with approval to authorize, actually, the submission of an FY24 Community Project Funding Form, being just a little over $500,000, and would be for the upgrade to the sewer line, Valley View subdivision. It's one that's been on our list for, what, how long, Larry? It should help alleviate some of the sewer issues we have in Valley View all the way, actually, that line goes all the way back up to.
The elementary school.
It actually, it's feeder from the Walmart.
The one at Walmart on Cherry Lane.
Yeah.
So that would hopefully help alleviate some of the issues they've had with sewer issues out there as well. And open up some property, because it'd be going from an 8-inch line to a 12-inch line. And I do need this approved, so we can apply for that funding.
Make a motion that we approve that, so we can apply for funding.
Second.
And a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say "aye." Post same. Motion passes.
So it is an application, it's not a given?
Right, yeah, it's an application, and it's.
We're going to have to start working on our infrastructure on the city, though. We have got to start.
We've done pretty good about it.
I know, we've done good catching up.
We take care of our INI issues, and that's the main thing. Okay, next item. Been talking with Commonwealth engineers to get with us, to look at the flooding issue on South Lafayette. We've been talking some time, they've come back. We have a general service agreement with them due to a water well project we had that they were working on out there by, off Hill Street. So we can kind of slide this under that. But I do need approval to go ahead with them to negotiate for them to come out, they're going to do an assessment and do some discussions, early discussions on scope of work and cost estimate.
And how to get the water out there, if they can.
I move to have that approved, definitely.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor, say "aye." Post same. Motion passes.
Y'all here to speak up a little bit louder?
Okay, we'll try. Next item is, we've been working on our computer security, and cybersecurity and what have you. And Shelby and I met several times with organizations, called IT in a Box. It is one of them that is put together by the Kentucky League of Cities. They have gone through, it would alleviate some of the issues that our police department's having with emails. It would give everybody an email address, and it would be a BDKY email address.
You talked to that mail address?
No, this is a different one.
It's a different one, okay.
They've got with different silver and bronze, which a lot of them determines the, for lack of a better word, people helping in the middle of the night. But they did recommend that we do some of them on silver, which would be the clerk, the treasurer, and a Lisa, and I think code enforcement. So we keep some of them on that level, and the others would be on the bronze level, which is still, they get watched over, and with the firewall and everything like that. One-time fee would be in the neighborhood, and it's dependent on what they find out, because one of the things they may have to do is do a Windows Pro upgrade on all of our computers, because all of them have just the regular Windows you get when you buy the computer. And they need that Pro upgrade for a commercial. And they've got a thing in here, $350 per computer to do that, but they're also wanting to sit down with us and look at the computers, the age of them, and maybe something for another $50, $100 a piece, we can buy a new desktop computer.
Good price.
To replace them. We have some that are quite old.
Yeah.
But we're looking at a one-time fee, anywhere from $9,500 to $11,400 neighborhood, and then a monthly subscription fee of about, just shy of $1,600 a month.
That's cheaper, no?
That was, yeah, the other one was $2700 a month, plus $19,000. Plus, they owned all the equipment.
Right.
And that's why we looked at this route. Lot of organs, lot of cities use it. This company specializes in municipality computer systems. That's what they do. They do some commercial, but 90% of their business is municipality.
And they got the backup and everything, so we don't, we won't lose everything if something goes down.
Oh, yeah. They have the backup, we'll have it set up where not all of them, but some of the computers can work remote. Snowstorm, Shelby, or Amy, either one could work from home, and still be able to keep up with everything and do everything they do here. So that's something I would like to recommend us move forward with. Like I said, we don't have exact dollar amounts, and won't have until we do all this, but if we can go ahead and get approval for this.
I make a motion, we approve the cyber.
Second.
I don't know what you call cyber, what is it called?
Well, it's called a, this is a work order to put in this new system, computer system. For cybersecurity is the big thing.
IT in a Box.
IT in a Box, and they take care of it all. Phone call. We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
You told me you're going to be.
Those in favor, signify with "aye." Post same. Motion passes. Next item is bids for a water line relocate on 231 Main Street between Ninth and 11th, Eighth and 10th. We had one bidder.
Yeah, somewhere.
[inaudible]
This is the one where they're gonna board under the, underground?
Mm-hmm. Quote is three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
From?
Bobby Luttrell and Sons.
Is that the only bid we got?
The only bid we got.
Make a motion we accept the bid.
Second.
I'm not being very talkative, but dang.
It's too hot in here.
Oh, it was making me say talk.
James, is this something we're ready to, do we need to look into this anymore with just getting one bid? Are you ready to go with it?
We're finding a bid before we accept anything.
That's what I'm thinking.
Go through the what?
Go through the bid.
Yeah.
And look at everything, so. Will you rescind that?
Yes, I rescind my.
I rescind mine, too.
Yeah, I would think that we would...
I mean, I'm not concerned about the contractor. They've done a lot of work for us, but...
I'm surprised there was only one bid.
There was two.
Yeah, I think there's some underlying issues there. Okay. James, you anything?
No, doing fine, Larry.
Sandy?
I do know that, I think, what I would talk about, we've got folks represented to talk about.
Nope, I'm gonna shake.
I'm not gonna say anything tonight. Yeah, I know, it's odd, I know.
Larry?
Got a date from Allen Westrom Newell, Department of Water and the Cabinet of Health Services has come back with a determination on the fluoride treatment system. Allen's putting together a proposal, so hopefully I'll have it in a week or so.
Larry, is that, yeah, that's it. Start right down the side and come up. Luke?
My question is in regards to the zoning and buffering that was going before fiscal quarter, I think tomorrow.
Okay, well, it's not going before tomorrow. They haven't got their orders put together.
I know they have. It was on the agenda to speak about tomorrow.
Yeah.
They moved it up to four tomorrow, and I don't know if there's a transfer, anyone else to speak about it, or if anyone else is getting a copy of what's coming?
Well, that's, I haven't even seen a copy of the ordinance yet, so that's why, last I heard it wasn't gonna be, I mean, it may be discussed, but it wasn't gonna be voted on tomorrow because they didn't have the ordinance. The goal, we looked at this, a lot of the cities state of Kentucky do this. The state statute allows a city that has planning and zoning or joint planning and zoning to do up to a five-mile buffer around the cities for planning and zoning. That's something that's got really blown out of proportion from what I'm hearing. All we have talked about is a twenty-five-hundred-foot buffer. Five miles is more than what Beaver Dam or Harper, either one, needs to work with. But all it affects, it does not affect a homeowner. If you live in that quarter-mile area and you want to build a garage, you build a garage. You do not have to come to planning and zoning and get a permit. You do not have to get anything from us or from the city or the planning and zoning. It only affect, it doesn't affect agriculture. If you're crop farming or cattle farming, it doesn't affect you at all unless, the only way it affects agriculture, it affects three things. It affects new subdivisions, it affects commercial, and it affects industrial. And the reason being, about all it would come up with, with what's planning and zoning has for those is setbacks. Some types of businesses may require fencing. Trying to do it to protect the entrances into the city, but also to protect the landowners and who have homes in those areas so somebody can't come right next to you. Right now, there is no zoning whatsoever in the county. So it protects somebody from coming up next door to your nice home and building whatever. It gives a little, there's a little guidance over it. They have to go by.
Right now, you're saying a minimum half mile up to five miles, correct?
Well, all this is, the state will allow you up to five. All this is, the ordinance the county will be doing is, I think, twenty-five-hundred feet.
Right now, you're running at 231.
Right.
You've annexed everything on 231, not touching, just the road itself out to the Hucks, right?
Right.
Roughly? So that means everything off of that twenty-five-hundred feet from center line?
Right.
So anything that runs 231 all the way down is subject to this?
For commercial, industrial, or subdivision.
Obviously, this is me directly, driving. That's, that's my main concern because we're, being brought out of city limits, we're under less regulation. And I'd like to refer you before anything goes, obviously.
Well, that's what, I was hoping to have an ordinance already, or ready to be read, and I found out it wasn't finished yet, so...
Who's writing the ordinance?
County attorney.
Okay.
That's, but that's what it's trying to do, just protect the entrances to the city a little bit and the homeowners that are up and down that stretch. You can go to some places and see there's been some stuff coming in. Like in your case, with the driving, it wouldn't really affect because you'll meet your setbacks. Your sidelines are twenty-five feet off the property line, front's twenty-five and back's ten, I believe. We're just trying to protect some of the property owners and, like I say, the city aesthetics. We've got a lot of people coming in.
Yeah.
We wanted to look good when they get here.
Yeah. On to your desk.
Well, speaking of city aesthetics, that's exactly what we're speaking of. When people come in to the amphitheater, it's not looking very pretty outside off of 231. So last month's meeting, I guess it was January, February's, the city would work on meeting with a civil engineer about consulting and seeing what could be done there. Do we have an update on that? I was about to get an update.
She wasn't in, she wasn't in here when we announced it.
She was outside.
Okay, we just...
You were outside. We already talked about that. We have a civil engineer coming.
That we've got a...
Moving forward.
That we have a general service agreement with?
We got a name?
Commonwealth engineers out of Bowling Green.
And a date that they're coming?
We haven't got that yet.
I don't know that.
We're working with their schedules right now. They just finished or are in the process of finishing up their project course with one of the water wells. And they're getting their guy together to come in to kind of do a quick overview of the site, get an idea of what kind of scope of work would be required and the cost estimate.
I surprise.
Yep, it all moves slowly when you're government.
I know. I am.
You know that of all people.
Well, that's the first good sign we had three months. Is the conversation with the civil engineer. This is the first good sign we had three months.
I know, but it comes back to it. Like I said before, when you have a piece of property in the flood plain, you've got to be prepared to get water.
Oh, I'm prepared. I'm still open.
No, I know, but...
But it's not just me that affects.
No, I, I'm...
The amphitheater's gorgeous on the hill. I love it. I support it. I support our city. But when the rest of it is slowly but surely looking terrible because of the non-attention to those issues, that's the only reason I'm here. I absolutely support. But it's gonna come times something has to give, so I'm appreciative that y'all have actually gotten in contact with the engineers. And did that just happen this week?
No, we've been talking over the last month period.
Well, you told me the last meeting that y'all get in contact with them when you've talked to somebody, and I never heard...
Well, I was trying to get a date, a firm date on when they were gonna be able to do something.
And the month before that, I was talking to farmers, and I never got a call back from anybody on that either. So it's not just me. I represent a group of, you know, ten or fifteen people. So hopefully have another update the next meeting?
Hopefully for them.
Hopefully for them.
Hopefully.
I'll take it.
Suzie?
I'm gonna skip over.
We're going, I'm going on by.
Skip over.
All right. Sir?
I'm with me on.
Okay.
Y'all have already talked a little bit about the drainage and sewer system over on Cherry Lane.
Mm-hmm.
Now, every time it rains, the sewer will back, fill up, at my house, it'll fill up my bathtub. And I'm sitting there breathing in sewer smell, and they have to bleach sanitize my tub every time after it rains. Of course, during the rain, I can't even use my bathroom or do nothing. It's been going on for years. Back January third, when we got that rain, three-thirty in the morning, I was up, it backed up, it flooded out my whole house. I'm drenching sewer water, trying to save wherever I can to my house, moving furniture around, 'cause I don't have money to replace it. And it flooded out every single room. Then I had to live with inhaling, breathing that sewer in for days until I got all that carpet ripped up out of my house. I'm living on a hard concrete floor right now. I can't afford carpet. My homeowner insurance won't pay for it 'cause they says it's a city issue. Well, city insurance can't be looked at. They're not gonna pay for it either. All I'm asking is help, cheap carpet. You know, if I get a loan to replace my carpet, this spring, when we get all this rain, why if it does again, then ruin all this new carpet that I had to borrow money for?
Do you have a one-way valve in your sewer system?
Well, back in 2016, I had a guy come install a flap out there in that.
It's supposed to only go, it's only supposed to be able to go out, it's not supposed to be able to come in. If it's coming in, somebody didn't install a flap, right?
Well, back in 2016, after I got that done when we had bad rain, my neighbors around me, it flooded their houses out and it saved mine.
Saved yours.
My neighbor beside me, it got hers so bad, they even had to cut out part of her walls.
But now it's flooded yours again.
But this time, it got me and it got my neighbor across the road. They had to rip out their carpet. Now, I got pictures here, I got pictures, you know, last year, my yard won't even grow grass 'cause it's, it's waterlogged and, you know, and mud hole all around my pool. I spent over a thousand dollars that spring trying to get dirt up there just to help, and try to get some grass growing there, didn't do a bit of good. And I got pictures of that, I got pictures of street now, how it's awful, and pictures of my home. And all I asked insurance, like, to come look at, I said, I ain't asking for nothing to spend, I ain't asking to get my furniture replaced, I ain't, you know, asking for expensive carpet, cheap carpet, just help me out. You know, I can't afford to replace it. I'm on a concrete floor right now out, I can't afford to replace it. And I just asked for help. You know, I pay insurance, I pay taxes, I pay sewer, and nobody don't want to help.
What's your address?
Thirteen oh three Cherry Lane.
Larry, do you know anything about our insurance?
I want y'all to have these pictures.
Do you know anything about our insurance?
Tim Cook.
Tim Cook.
Yep. And, you know, I was, right now, I got my cap off outside. The several rains we had after that January third, it has been coming up, and I got sewer nasty in my front yard, front of my door right now where it's coming outside, but I'd rather have it outside than in my house.
Right.
Like I said, I'm tired of breathing that every time it rains, I had to smell it.
Again, that's why I asked you about the flap, 'cause flaps should prevent that from that.
And, you know, that's a health measure.
Down the road from there, it's not just him.
Jordan Hatt was here last year.
Jordan Hatt was here last year, or last month. It's all down thirteen, or down Cherry Lane.
It's not even Cherry Lane. I had talked to some neighbors. I was fixing to call a private company.
I was at a hundred and eight, hundred and three acres.
And I just want my...
I don't know where we can send it, though.
I hold off on that. I have already talked, meeting neighbors on all these streets, and everybody about fed up with them and having to...
And the fact of it is, it's not just happening here in the last one year, two years. My husband, Brent Hamilton, I had guys come out to try to fix my driveway. My driveway is all broke up. The concrete that was just put down, or blacktop added to that, it's all crumbled up from where the water stands. And my husband tried, I don't know how many times. The city come out there and decided they would dig, they, well, what do you want us to do? I said, I want you to fix this. Because it does not drain. I said, put a drain in. We can't afford that. And I said, okay, well, fix it to where it'll at least flow good. And he's, and he come over there and they dug a little, I got pictures, too. I got pictures where the last year, my husband was able to go to Florida with us before he died, he was digging up, shoveling mud from where the water and everything had to be, it was just, it's unreal down there. And like I said, the guy laughed at me when he said, well, I tried to point out some things to him, and he said, well, I'm just doing what I'm told.
That guy sitting right here?
Is that who? No, it wasn't you.
Oh, yeah, it was.
No, it wasn't you.
It was.
I'll tell you who it was. It was Marilla Hughes's brother-in-law from Horse Bridge. That's who it was.
We come up there and done the ditching, but we've talked...
Yes, you had them to come down, but it wasn't you that come down with the tractor and done it. You did not.
That's correct.
Yes, I am correct.
And we never say that we could not approach. The water's flowing.
Sir, he was not there.
Where is the water coming to now?
And I'm telling you. And they said that they couldn't do anything. I said, the guys, they stopped about like from here to right there where they dug the ditch. And I said, well, can you not go ahead? Because there's another little ditch that goes out this way. He said, well, we can't dig into his yard. You're gonna have to go over and beg him. I said, okay, there's a sign right there on this pole that says speed limit, whatever. I said, it's funny, when you guys want to come on in the ditch and the property, y'all own it. But then when it's throwback at you to do something, oh, we don't own it. That's yours. I'm just telling you, my whole place, it is just broke up from the water where Dwight Raymond lives on a pier, and it just drains all right into my...
Comes right down your driveway.
Yes, heck yes. Right down.
We're getting all theirs coming down on our way.
And what's so bad about it, the mud is so deep. I'm sorry, I don't know about you, but I cannot afford to power wash it. My water bill was just being my special son is over a hundred dollars. I can't do it. We're living on thirteen thousand dollars a year right now, me and my son.
Because I know, I met with Brent one time on the water coming down the street.
Yes, this is the part, yes. It's been going on for years, and it gets, just keeps getting tabled over and tabled over. And yes, you helped me, and I'm not saying that you did not talk to me. I'm not putting you down at all, but nothing is being done. And I'm telling you, it's my, my place is not even worth, everything is just cracked up and broke up. And right now, like I said, it's, the mud is that deep, and I just keep letting it grow because I can't afford to fire wash it. I can do it, I'm able, and I'm willing.
This is the road that goes down.
But when that bill comes in, I'm not.
It's involved in Cherry Lane.
And we're sick of it. We're sick of it. When you come down there and you get there, it's a big heavy run. No, sir, we have, it's flooding constantly. And from up over that lake is back behind me, it goes down both sides. And I tell you, I was at the point, and I think I told you, I said, well, I'm fixing to have somebody come down here. I got a guy that's got a bulldozer, and I said, I'm fixing to bulldoze all around my We have, it, it's flooding constantly, and from up over that lake is back behind me, it goes down both sides. And I tell you, I was at the point, and I think I told you, I said, well, I'm fixing to have somebody come down here. I, I got a guy that's got a bulldozer, and I said, I'm fixing to bulldoze all around my house, and I'm gonna pile the mud up, and then, then you can worry about where the water goes. And they just kind of laughed at me.
Well, that's the problem we're experiencing in a lot of these subdivisions, to be point, just point blank. They weren't put in properly at the end with.
That's not my fault.
No, I, I know, that's, well, that's not the city's fault either.
Did y'all just get a grant of some kind for the sewage and water and all that, a big huge grant? Where's that going? I mean, that's just what I was told, I'm not, I, I just want y'all to verify that for me, I don't know.
Yeah, we did get one for sewer extension.
Where's, where's the money at?
We hadn't got it yet.
You hadn't got it yet? So, is this gonna be on the number one list when it does come?
No, this is for another neighborhood subdivision.
So, so, so who do we have to be for our neighborhoods to become? Do we gotta be a luttral, do we gotta be a, I don't know, name off some more names? Who do we have to be to get our neighborhood set, set in?
That's not how this city operates, that's never how this city's operated. But I have a question, when that water comes down the street in front of Dwight, crosses Cherry Lane and goes right down your driveway, the only way to fix that would be to cut your driveway and have a.
Right now, it's all breaking up, I don't care what you do to it.
But, but the thing of it is, is there a fall to put a ditch in to even go to?
On our house.
Because your, your house is lower than the road.
It's the west, the west side of our house.
Because they stacked, instead of when they go bring the blacktop in, it wouldn't be, but instead of taking it up or doing whatever, they keep stacking it, the blacktop, and, and, yeah, it's, it's what, yeah, they keep paving it over and over. And, yeah, my, my driveway's lower.
Yeah, but it was lower even with the first.
It was lower, but it's a whole lot lower now. Because I can show you the, the steps of the blacktop. But it's awful, I mean, I'm not exaggerating even a little bit.
Well, they'll picture the different rains.
And I've got pictures.
I mean, you see how bad every time it rains it gets.
Do what? Yes, my husband passed away two years ago, September from COVID. And he, and he's done, he, he begged the city. He's had him out there many times, and, and you were one of them. And could never get nobody to even look our way. Yes, he did. He passed away about probably over a year after he did. I took care of him till he died. He's a good man, and, I, I mean, we may not be uptown people around here, but I tell you what, Brent Hamilton, you couldn't have found a better man than him. I don't care who you are. And I think we deserve something. And it would flow a little bit better if they could go over into that next door neighbor's yard and cut up through there and then clean that one ditch out. But I was told that I would have to go over there and beg him to see if I can do that.
Who'd you say told you that?
Ferlin, Ferlin, I don't know his last name.
Lindsay.
Lindsay, that's who told me. And he laughed at me, because I questioned him about something, and he laughed at me, and he said, well, I'm just doing what I'm told. Because I, I, right now, I didn't, I just found out about this meeting. And so, I didn't get to prepare like I should have, but I have called the city, you can ask them, I have called and called and called to ask, to talk to people, and I get the same thing every time, well, they're not here, they're not here, they're not here. I'll give them the message, no comments, no nothing.
Oh, I mean, I thought I always got a message when you called.
Nobody's called me.
How long has it been?
How long?
How long's it been since you called?
Last rain we had, I, 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 yes, I just, yeah, I called and I told him, I said, if they want to see what's going on, it was pouring down right, I said, tell them to come down here right now, right now. And they said.
I talked to Brent, but I was raised, I was talking to Brent.
Oh, no, no, this happened before Brent was too sick, Brent was sick for two years in a row with heart and, and cancer and COVID. No, but, yeah, that was a long time ago. But I'm saying, just this last rain we had, it was so bad, the whole back was flooded, the whole yard was flooded, the whole, it was horrible. And so, I thought, well, you know, pictures aren't really no good, so how about let's just call them and have them come down and take a look and maybe see where the water's coming from. Couldn't get nobody to come down.
That's what I usually do, if I'm in town when we have a big flood, I go and drive.
Well, it was just, it wasn't, it was just a rain.
Let me rephrase that, when we have a substantial amount of rain, because I live on Fourth, and so we have a, I'm waiting in it tomorrow year before.
Right.
But when it does that, I try to get out and drive around some, if I'm in town, which I usually am, and I go out probably when I shouldn't, but anyway, I do. But I've been called to the other side of the street, but not you weren't side of the street.
No, it's, it's so. I have, I have called the city, I know I've had them out there two or three times this year, or, well, at the end of last year versus this year. Was only in March. But, um, and, yeah, and like I said, there's more people besides us two, like I said, we just found out about the meeting, so that's.
Well, but your, your issue's not sewer, it's just the water.
I think drainage, but I don't know if it's because of sewer, or, you can go all the way down through Thompson, right back around Thompson, Duval and all that. You can see where all the water is just.
Yeah, it comes right down, I know where it comes down behind you.
My, this drainage is.
You do realize, when it gets to Duval Road, when the water gets to Duval Road, it stops being the city's problem, it becomes the county's problem. So if it's backing up because of what's on the other side of the road.
I don't know about the other side, I'm talking about where Thompson Drive on this side.
I know, I know where you're talking about, but if the water has nowhere to go, it's going to start backing up.
Somebody needs, city and county needs to get together then, it's the only thing I can figure out.
But that's, see, that's our property, we can't, the city going there.
It's not county, sir. Come, come, I told you, I called several times.
I grew up there, and I've lived there a lot longer than you, ma'am, because I live right up on.
I bet you wouldn't guess my age in a heartbeat, but anyway, that's.
I've lived there since nineteen sixty-four.
Conversation we had at the last meeting, the same conversation, the gentleman was at the county, and you say where you lived, and you lived on the first street, the gentleman had the same issue that's their neighbor that was here, you're giving the same runaround.
But I do.
Nikki, Nikki, we'll take care of this right now.
No forward thinking, no let's get a solution or proactive thing, it's the same thing.
We're trying, we can't, look.
Well, this is the last thing I'm gonna say.
Well, I want to say something real quick, because I feel like I communicated with you really well, and if you think that I didn't for the past meetings.
It's got nothing to do with communication, it's got to do with somebody doing something.
No, it has to do with communication.
No, Paul Thomas, he would let me know about the civil engineer before this next meeting. It has nothing to do with me, you talking about the meetings and go look at this area. He specifically said last meeting that he would let me know about civil engineer before this meeting, and I think, and.
Last thing I want to say, my husband, like I said, has been to you guys million times wanting. I was at the point, finally, this last time that we had the rain, I got a guy that would, like I said, would come up and would dig all the way around my house if I wanted to. Good thing I didn't, because there's a gas line right there, because the gas people just came by just right in time, because I would have had it done. I don't care where the water goes after that, because it's not, it's, it's ruining my property. It's literally ruining it. So.
The times that I've been out there, it was a lot of private property.
That's the problem where, on the back side.
It was coming up from, um, Old Hartford Road, what Stewart, Stewart, she works for DCS.
It can't be private property, because, well, then, like I told them.
You're all, I think we're all talking about two different, you're talking about the back side of her house, she's talking about the front.
What's your address, ma'am?
I'm talking about across.
Thirteen twenty Cherry Lane. Thirteen twenty, yours thirteen oh?
Thirteen oh three.
And yours thirteen twenty, okay, got it.
Yeah, we could have got a whole.
You know where Melissa lives?
Melissa?
Bartlett, um, she's Drake, Melissa Drake, she lives, I've been to her house several times, we've looked at it several times. Water, it comes down off of.
Well, the only thing they done, when they come and dug that ditch, was made a big hole for, for water to stand in, mosquitoes would be a million times worse than what they already are. That's all they done.
I don't recall anyone talking about that side of the road.
Because the ditch is the same all the way across there, and it ain't like they even kind of tilted it to where it would maybe go off in the neighbor's way. It just, it's just one big ditch about that deep. It's all done.
What did you say your address is, ma'am?
Mine is thirteen twenty Cherry Lane. And I hope Brent would be proud of me for coming up and standing up here, because he was such a quiet man and didn't cause any problems at all.
And just talking about ditches and everything, my ditch, my backyard, on the other side of the ditch, you got the spectrum, got their stuff, the electric company got their stuff there, well, a couple of years ago, the electric company did a lot of work on theirs, they drove through that ditch, stuff like that, they got the ditch halfway filled in, the half the side, it's, it's pretty much, they ain't additional more related to everything. Actually, down there, it needs to be redug out back there, and it probably will help some.
I don't know.
That's behind your house?
Yeah, behind my house, there's a ditch runs behind my house, yep.
Do you know where Barbara Bunch lived? That property there has not, nobody has been on that property in, I'd say, a good ten years probably. Brent mowed it because the yard was getting up so high that we was afraid of snakes coming over in there, so he would go over there and mow that yard. Well, now, there's a big tree up back down there, it's still laying there where we had that storm that last time, and I, I don't guess she's made to do anything. I don't know if she still owns it, but I don't know what's wrong with.
Does she live on Duval, Barbara Bunch?
She did.
She did live on?
Not on Duval, not on Duval and Cherry.
I thought she lived on.
She lived two lanes, or two houses down from me.
And Melissa's is at an angle from Barbara's.
Okay, well, where Barbara's is, there's a big huge tree down the back, and then that back ditch there, it's all, it's just, it's just a mess. It needs to be taken care of, I don't know whose job it is, but we need something done. And we need a petition, if y'all want a petition, we can do that.
That one with the Bunch House.
Do what?
With the Bunch House, with, and that's one thing we talked about tonight, we're working on, but with that complaint, code enforcement can do something now.
It's pitiful, it's pitiful, but, uh, do y'all want a petition? I mean, we can get a petition there on Cherry Lane, I mean, it, it wouldn't be hard to get one up for everybody to sign it. We've talked about it, we've, I mean, something needs to be done. I mean, call C N.
They just issued a complaint on that Barbara Bunch property, so we need.
We've got something going with it.
Oh, you've already been talked about, okay.
Already got something working on it.
That back ditch, if y'all come down there, come to my house, you're all welcome, come back there and just see everything that's overgrown coming up from that Steve Gary's lake over there. It's all grown up, and then it floods too.
Is the back ditch between you and the houses that are on Duval Road, is that what you're calling the back ditch?
No, I'm talking about the, my property and back where Thompson owns all that property, I'm in between there.
It's coming off of Old Hartford Road where it was on the other side, coming down from Old Hartford Road.
But every time, all that, every bit of it, just, I don't know, but like I say, I, I feel like I made Brent, Brent proud, and hopefully y'all do something.
One thing that we did tonight with our first reading, this property maintenance, we can do stuff about the brush and stuff.
Brush and tree down and stuff like that.
Our offices are set up.
Well, how come you can't dig that ditch like what I asked him to do?
We're not supposed to dig on private property on someone else's property.
Then why is there a sign that says?
No, we can dig it in front of, we can dig it along the street, but I thought you were wanting to dig down.
No, no, I'm talking about in the ditch, there's a, there's a light pole that's there, okay? Who, who said you could put a light pole there?
Yeah, that'd be a utility company issue.
I'm just asking, whose property is it? Okay, and then there's a sign, wait a minute, there's a sign that says, go slow, children, I don't know, that sign's there, whose, whose sign is that?
The city would have a right of way to the bottom of the ditch.
Then, then I feel like you have a right of way to, to clear that out.
But I thought you were talking about coming up along the street and then turning and going towards the back of your house. That's what I thought you meant.
No, that's where it's all, well, there's two ways you can do it, you can do it besides me and Barry Emery, that would have to be done that way, but no. The other way, that he knows I'm talking about, you go down that way in front of Matt Dewis's house, right beside Barbara Bunch, there is a ditch down through there, and that needs to be all cleaned out, but in front of Matt Dewis's, there is no ditch, there is no drain, there is no nothing. I asked them, I said, can you not put a drain in here? Nope, what'd you tell me? And it costs too much?
I never told you it costs too much.
Private property, we're not allowed to go in.
But, but if this is a ditch along the street.
That's what he's saying, it's private property, we're not allowed.
Then do I need to take, do I need to take the sign down, come through at the city hall?
Again, I don't know, I, I have been here as long, I can go see exactly where you're at.
I'm done, y'all got my message.
That's why I got your, oh, that's got your address.
I just want to make sure, we can, we can walk on a ditch along the street?
Well, I, I, a little, just, if you just cut a hole right there beside the blacktop, maybe that might help water drain a little bit better, I don't know. I'm just saying, if the water could get from this point past my neighbor to that ditch that goes that way, and then clean all that out from the back, that might would help, I'm just saying.
When you say the ditch that goes that way, is it parallel with the street, or is it like between houses?
There's a ditch between the houses, between Barbara Bunch and Matt Dewis.
But it's already there, the ditch is already there.
The ditch, ditch is already there, yes, yes, it just needs to be cleaned out, I don't know whose, it may be Barbara's deal, I don't know. But all I know is, is there's no ditch between, there is no drain system at all between Matt Dewis and Barry Emery's, there's nothing, nothing. So, and I like you, you're looking at me awful mean, but I'm just saying, I like you.
You're saying words that I did not say, I never said it costs too much money, I told you if it was on.
Well, maybe that was the Ferlin guy.
I told you if it was on the right way.
He was very cocky.
We would ditch anything, we cannot allow private property.
We apologize for that, and that will be addressed.
Insurance will not allow us to own private property.
Well, no, you've been very good to me, I will not, I will not say that in front of anybody in here. They say they have to go to you, and that's what they was telling me. All I know is, is he was very cocky, very arrogant, and, and he laughed at me, like I was just. And, like, my, my husband has, has fought for this for so long, and I, like I said, you, you have been out there too. So I'm not, I'm not making up a story, so.
I come out and did some work for you.
Well, I, I don't even know if my driveway is even savable.
Do you know the ditch she's talking about, do you know the ditch change that she's talking about? Is it, is it a private property or is it on city?
I believe it, I believe that it turns into private property, because what happens, it's up about, it's not a hundred yards above her house, all up Cherry Lane, up to the, it would have been, be to the west or whatever, and there's a ditch there, but it, it runs around behind the properties. And I think that when I talked to Brent, and I, that spin about, I forgot when that was, he was still alive.
He's still alive and well.
It's over two years ago. That ditch, he told me that the issue then, I think it ran on somebody else.
That's the side ditch, that's the side ditch, that's between Matt Dewis and, um.
Really don't need open to turn.
Well, it's not gonna do no good if the ditch that Ferlin dug, because it's not going nowhere.
He showed me where the water ran down, and it was coming across the road, didn't have anywhere to go, he took.
That's where the drain was coming in good, but.
On a bad rain, is what he told me.
It's not just bad rains, I, I promise you, I can tell you.
That was the, because he talked to me about the clean, that we had had it real bad, and he was telling me about.
I get out there and it was definitely good.
Cleaning it up over the Corvette, but I remember talking to him.
I've never.
Man, I didn't remember it being that long ago.
Isn't any of that the ditch, because when you put your address in, that's what comes up on Google Maps? His house.
No, I don't know whose property that is, wait a minute. No, that's down up toward him.
That's what's coming up.
I'm over here.
I know where you live.
Oh, no, I'm on that side over there.
I know where you live, but I was trying to get a visual from this.
Yeah, he's on the, the other direction, up, up the street.
Yeah, that's across the street.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I'm on the other side.
Yeah, because I know where you live, and I thought, well, that didn't look like anything as to where you live.
Is there a tile in, there's not a tile under your driveway, is there?
Yep, there's nothing, nothing, there's no tile under, actually, I don't even know if there's a tile anywhere, do you?
I got a tile.
There's a tile, there's a tile right there.
They used to, they used to pour concrete driveway, they put that tile in there.
Yeah, I got a concrete.
It was way too small.
Oh, yeah.
See, that's.
Well, Brent.
It's washed all my driveway, my driveway runs over and just, I got gravel on the other side of my driveway in the ditch there where it just washed out in that ditch.
Now, I will say Brent built a, or he had a new driveway paved, and he put a tile under it. But the, but the main driveway does not have a, have a tile.
Okay, well, I'm gonna come over a little bit, so I, I just.
I would appreciate it.
Oh, no, I have no.
Appreciate it very, very much, like I said.
I shouldn't, and, you know, like they told me, it may have got stuck open, but still, I shouldn't have worried about that if I had run through, you know.
Thank you all.
But all, all, all I'm asking, you know, can I get help on replacing my carpet in my home? I'm happy with cheap, I'd like help.
Let's reach out to the insurance company. Can you see? I know, but I would like to know what her.
I mean, I ain't asking nothing fancy, expensive, I'm happy with cheap as possible, just help me put carpet back in my home.
So your insurance said it was the city?
It's the city issue, they won't cover it.
Our insurance said what?
They're just blaming it on, I asked, no, unusual rain, no amount of rain, but it's not unusual when we're getting it all the time. You look at my picture, I got one back in January last year, June last year, July last year, where it backed up.
Do you need my phone number?
This is every time, it's not unusual.
I gotta go, I got a special sign at home, two seven zero three six three six six two two. Thank you all.
But I appreciate y'all just looking at pictures, I mean, in my home, that's outside my yard, and it's.
We'll run across with the insurance company.
What's your phone number?
Two seven oh nine seven seven five six one nine. I think my phone number is in here too.
Oh, okay.
Yep. If I see anything you're talking about, I really appreciate it. Like I said, I can afford it, I live on my concrete floor right now, it's my whole house.
Did you want to take these with you?
No, I can make more copies, I, you know, I said the pictures inside my house, my yard. Yeah, I got them separated.
I was looking to see if it had no date.
Well, the date's on the one where back at my tub, only thing, I have a date on it. But right here, this, my tub, every time, it, it stinks, and I had to smell it, and this, there's times I was at home, every many times I'd come home from work, I had seen a stain, and I could smell it, you know, I had walked from door about a long time ago. But every time it's just a decent amount of rain, this, in July last year, that was in, uh, March last year, and that was in January last year, but like I said, and they had more than that, I just wasn't at home to catch.
You're on the same side.
I'm on the opposite side.
You're on the opposite side.
That's what Brent and I talked about, was coming down.
But I don't have the money to put the fire wash down, I just, I just left it up in the loop, it's just that bad.
Right here, how my yard floods, all these pictures, how my yard floods and how it rains. And right there, January, went flooded out my house.
Well, I thought the conversations with Brent, that when the water was coming down the street, crossing the street, and right down the driveway and garage.
It wouldn't seem, well, I don't look.
I don't know, I don't think that's the way it's happening, I just know, like I said, I've had many pictures of that, I don't know if it's coming out of the bottom. All right, thank you all so much. You look familiar, who are you, you David Johnson?
No.
No? Oh, Charles Patton, I knew that, why I said David Johnson.
I didn't bring it long enough too.
Is this your friend, you have a year?
Yeah, yeah, all this was taken from, you know, at my, you know, outside my house there, in my yard, my front backyard, out even down to the bridge, over the street. And, like I said, this is different times when you're raining, so it just, you look, it water be all around my pool, I said, I probably just want to wash that all in my pool. I mean, it, it get up that high of the pool wall, just sits there.
Well, and that's for, just telling her, because I haven't been out there and looked at it before. I know it's not a good answer, but it's all I can give you, the whole thing was designed terrible, uh, the whole stuff, and it's not alone, it's not the only one we've got. As far as round.
Own system there, do you think all the new stuff that you built all around, you know, between the new subdivision, you got Walmart and the press hunt there, and all that flows in that direction?
Well, Walmart, Walmart. A lot of it, the way that lake's set up, and coming down the back there, and again, it's on private property, there's nothing we can do as far as going out there. But with this new, COVID, this new problem makes, because it talks about, uh, water flow and, you know, weeds and root growth and stuff, impede water. With that, that we couldn't, we can't do right now with the way all of this is written. Now, the tree down on the, the Bunch property, because we run into issues, ours is a nuisance right now, so, you and I think that's a nuisance, but the guy that I work with, I think it's a nuisance, because it doesn't affect. And that's why we're trying to get stuff a little more clarified. And that's why we're trying to get stuff a little more clarified.
Yeah, I, I've been working, got sick over, you know, back syrup smell in my house and stuff like that, you know, these years, like I said. Really a health hazard, had to live in that stuff. And like I said, and when that happened, I was covered and trying to save my home. You know, you don't know how it feel when you're sitting there doing everything you can trying to save your home. You can't, I said, more fuck more and I said, they're crying. But I'm losing everything I, and I don't have money to replace it. What do I do?
I know how it is. We live on Ocean Road in our basement. I sit down in front of the stairs and saying, I'm not, you ain't got time to sit down and cry. You gotta get me to your butt to work. So I know, I know.
No, I live there by myself. I'm trying to pick up all my heavy furniture, trying to get away as far as I can from it and it's... It's awful. It's not ever more.
Mine wasn't like that. I know how bad it was. I sit down, start crying, I'm like, you gotta do something with this.
And of course, I said, covered in. Of course, I don't have a bathroom to use, nothing to get myself everybody clean. And I spent all day watching the steam cleaner, kept on trying to suck it up out of carpet all. I missed work that day. I thought I can't come in and try and get it all sucked up. And I said, my house smelled like syrup over a weekend. I said, there had a living that smelled it every night. And I mean, it stinks so bad. And I finally got a carpet ripped up, sprayed bleach all over the place, all over. And trying to get rid of the smell and...
With, to Brent.
Because I've been...
I seen water, you talking about the water coming over the road right down this driveway. But it just, the house being low in the ground. He didn't want to put a drain, you know, cut out the driveway. Like a grate or something.
I won't take that number of time. But like I said, y'all can't have that. I really appreciate it. Like I said, cheap is possible. I will be happy for y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll go right here at the front table. All right, we're back. So, here we go.
So, um, I received a letter today in February twenty sixth. Well, I didn't see it until Friday. It was sent to my son that my name is on the letter, that our property, our farm on two thirty one, is going to be annexed into the city. That, I, that's how I read it. I'm not sure that's what the intent was. I think I spoke to you on the phone, Larry, when I was at the, um, the office asking questions. Because when I got the letter, I went to ask questions as to what it meant, if you were planning on annexing in the farm. Because the way I read it, with all these coordinates, it, it looked to me like that's what you are doing. I'm not a hundred percent sure that's what you're doing, but that's what I think is planning to be done here with our farm.
Yeah. What that was done, we were approached, it's been a couple of years ago now, about some issues with some of the landowners out there that was having septic issues and was asking about the possibility of being able to get sewer run out there. And at the time I told them, I said, it would be difficult to do because it's expensive. We're looking at probably close to a million dollars. But since then, uh, we were able to secure some funding. It came down through federal government and it's for sewer expansion and to help people that were in a situation where they was having sewer problems. And I spoke with some of y'all, and I guess, I don't know where the misunderstanding was, because I've talked to some of y'all here and I was under the impression you were okay with this. No, I didn't, I didn't see you, but some of them I would see out of places. I would see that was, was okay with this and was interested in getting it to get the sewer out there. And we've secured, we've secured about right at the million dollars, a little extra, a little more, to get it taken care of and get it run. But to extend a sewer, it has to be annexed into the city. Yours comes in because it's in front of it, all of it. They will not let us quarter annex right up a road.
Well, but haven't you annexed other properties that aren't? I mean, there are plenty of people between here and Beaver Dam that don't want to be annexed and they're not.
No. Two thirty one had infrastructure that belonged to the city with the sewer force mains. We can do that. But there is nothing along, no city utility along Prairie Washington Road or Drive, whatever it is, that we could annex right up the road. So we had to take that in order to get it. Of course, you get the farm exemption, so your property taxes are minimal on what yours will be. But that's, that's how this all came about, trying to help some people who were having issues with septic. Again, the ones I talked to, I thought was okay with it, and some of the others that I've talked to on the phone, I thought we had the majority. That's what they wanted and that's what we were going for.
Well, I guess I'm concerned because no one called me. No one talked, we owned it for three years?
So when you were building, no one approached you about?
No. I mean, now, Miles, you told me that...
Yeah, I knew you were gonna say something about it, which I said I wasn't really interested in.
That's the only thing I know.
No, I knew that you all weren't interested in it, but again, we had to do it to get to the subdivisions.
Well, you had to do it, but don't you think it would have been nice to have called me or my son? I mean, I, I'm just, I'm confused as to how this could happen. And there's a vote coming up in one week and I just found out about it. And I don't understand what you plan to do with the farm. I think you told me, Larry, that there would be some questions or there would be, um...
All the questions, all the questions would be at the meeting on the sixteenth.
But you're gonna, you mean on the twentieth, next month? Because you said that we could ask questions as to the plan for the engineer. Were they planning to put the sewer lines?
I was gonna try to have a map here showing you where the sewer line was projected to be, which would be on the right way of Prairie Washington and the right way of two thirty one.
Okay, so when you say right away, do you mean on my property?
The, the street right away.
The street.
Okay, so, but the street...
Sewer line's across from two thirty one right now from where we are. There's a sewer line going around...
Force main line. It's a force main.
Force main, yeah. The pump station's up there by the rest of it.
Yes. This would be a gravity line that would run from down Prairie Washington two thirty one and then across two, down two thirty one, down towards the Kate Hill Loop with another pump right there to pump it into that force main that's across the road.
I'm aware of where they are.
Yeah, but what I'm not aware of is exactly how that's gonna affect our property and the lines from the road. And because I would have liked to have the opportunity to see the plans or to know what people were planning to do with one entire stretch and the other. I mean, I'm talking the entire front of our property and the entire side of our property up here in Washington. I mean, that's half. I mean, it's one way and the other way. That's our entire property.
But I don't think, I think Prairie Washington's gonna be on opposite side from them, isn't it?
You got eight hundred and seventy-four feet of road running on two thirty one.
Yeah. But I'm talking on Prairie Washington. I think it's, but I think it's on the opposite side of...
Well, the water line's already going. No, I think the opposite side, Danks, on Danks side?
On the Danks side of the road.
Is that where it's gonna be?
I think that's where the sewer line's on, because I think the water's on your side, isn't it?
I think it is.
Water is on my side.
So...
So why does it have to even include my property if you're gonna put it over on Ima Danks?
It's not gonna be on Ima Danks. It's gonna be on the right way of the, of the street.
What do you call a right way? If they're on opposite side of the road, be Ima Danks.
Well, the, the county's got, right now it's a county street and the county's got so wide of a right way through there for it to set on, so it'd be in the...
I know, I know.
It'd be in the county.
Well, when you do that, don't you have so many feet past that right way? So you...
Twenty foot from the center of the road, correct?
I don't know what that particular one, that one is.
Okay.
Right way on Prairie Washington is sixty feet.
Okay, I was thinking it was wider than that, but I wouldn't have said because I don't know.
Sixty feet?
Yeah.
Thirty to the center. Thirty to the center.
Thirty from the center.
Sixty feet, thirty feet from the center each way.
Which you're right at the border of the water line, yes?
Well, it has to be so many feet from the water line. That's why I'm thinking it's gonna be on the other side of Prairie Washington. On her side of Prairie Washington.
So it doesn't even involve us?
It would on two thirty one.
Well, on two thirty one it would.
Well, it's gonna take all the time.
And now that, you're talking about going from where, where across two thirty one?
It goes from Prairie Washington all the way down to...
Kind of in the bottom of the ditch, basically.
You're talking five hundred.
And the reason we did that, we could have got around without doing that, but with the funding we were able to get, we can go down there and that opens up about four hundred acres for future development. All the way back to Apple House Road and all gravity right to there. Which just makes it...
I understand what it opened up, but who owns that property is gonna develop it?
Well, I think you might see, be surprised what this kind of development may start happening with all this stuff going on in bowling ring.
Well, I understand what a lot of bowling rings do.
But they're starting to look here to live here.
Well, they may be, but they're not gonna propel it. What, behind Kate Hill Loop?
Yeah, Silver subdivision, all that area, yeah. That's where they're wanting to develop.
Part of the city though.
Huh?
They're not in city.
No, but they can still be, they can still use the sewer.
Be annexed then as they come in and develop.
Use the sewer for development, yeah.
I mean, the sewer runs all the way out to the parkway.
Force main. It's, that's the problem, getting the pumps to pump into the force main.
Right.
But still, with this annex, you are talking higher taxes for the rest of our lives and our children's and grandchildren's lives.
Yeah, yours, I did hear it down at one time.
And, and...
No, it wouldn't affect your water bill at all.
Why that sewer bill?
It would affect, if you, if you hook up the sewer, you'll have sewer.
Their water would still be by the county. It, yeah, it, why do you still be the county?
Or right now?
Well, most of the time it stays that way forever. I don't mean to be rude, but I don't know we'd ever take it.
I mean, I, I just have questions because I just found out about this Friday. I have a lot of questions. I'm just confused. And I, I'd like to know what's gonna happen and what the impact is gonna be. But also, you know, it's my understanding, but the few people I've met in this short period of time, they all have increased taxes too. It, it affects everybody, not just the people that want it. It affects everybody in that subdivision.
Well, anybody that's annexed in the city will affect their taxes.
Yes, that, that includes us if they annex it.
I have a question. Why would, why would I stay on county?
Why would you stay on county? Water? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, what, because the only thing I gain is paying city taxes and stuff like that, right?
Okay.
Access to the sewer.
You get the sewer, access to the sewer. But because you're on county water, you pay county for water. You pay the city for the sewer.
Who's having all the hookups?
Each individual, landowner, if you wanted to hook up. You don't have to hook up.
Yeah, you don't have to. And the difference is you wouldn't have had a septic tank.
The only thing I gain is paying city taxes. I mean, really.
Well, and you don't have to have a septic tank.
Police protection, fire protection.
Well, a lot of that.
No, we get that. But my, my issue is, where it comes in, is my septic tank where it sits at, I have a gas line that runs right there. So then we've gotta tear up all that and they intersect the way y'all wanna run it, if it got approved.
All that would have to be...
But I'm gonna have to be liable for it because that's the way in the, the thing that y'all got, that's gonna cost me more money to hook it all up.
Yeah, whoever does, whoever hooks that up.
So then if I have a gas line leak, then all that, then it just gets a big headache. They intersect, they're gonna intersect each other.
Larry, would they have to move the gas lines or would?
I'm not doing that.
I don't, I don't know how it would work because I don't, I don't know, I don't know where all the lines are running out there.
You explained to me, we had to run around the house, all the way up to my front of the driveway where they're gonna break my pavement and everything.
Yeah, the line would come here in front of the house, the, the tie-in goes from the septic bag to it. So where does that cost? But you're up to the contractor on that.
So it's up to the subdivision?
Just past the drive-in on the right.
Eighty-five percent, you said?
Yeah. So there's eleven houses back there.
Is it going on fifty, is it going on property owned?
Property owners.
So what if they're not here that?
Huh?
Amount of owners or amount of land?
Property owners, number of owners.
So how many owners do we have?
Eleven.
Be eleven, because there's eleven.
No, there's some of them, like, yours, there's, there's two.
There's two owners, yeah.
Uh, yours is two, Joey. Yeah, yours is two. Randy's and Rhonda's is one, according to the PBA records.
So what if they're not here that Monday? What is that considered? Because people work. I mean, they, we all have different schedules. What if they're not here that Monday to vote?
Did everyone get a letter?
Or got called or something?
Everyone got a letter. We had to send them out.
But it's not specific in the letter.
Well, Ms. Evans, I don't know if she's able.
So you gotta think, we have two elderly households out there, that one, it depends on what day, and the other one depends on how her husband and herself are that day.
Did it send a proxy or something?
The, the vote next Monday is just for this commission to vote whether or not to do the first reading. Then it, there'll be instructions on how to go about it if you want to do a petition to go on the ballot.
Well, my understanding, this is the second reading, because that's why it stated in here.
Well, this first reading was for notice of intent. You still take two readings.
So the final vote...
No, your party.
So the final vote is not going to be next Monday. It's gonna be an initial vote, because I, I misunderstood that.
There'll be an initial vote next Monday.
So that'll put it where, if it passes or not?
That, then it, that's the first, first re, first process step in the process. Then it goes up and enough people don't want it, they can do a petition. But like I said, we would never done this, except for the ones I had talked to. We had the people that wanted it. Now it seems like some of them changed their mind.
Well, I had been asked if we had septic issues and I said, no. And then a year ago, someone had messaged us, asking where we stood and we said, no.
Yeah, I think I sent you a message and asked, and you, I knew you all weren't, was not interested.
Yeah, and so we never heard anything else about it. So, but then I got a word reached out.
I, I was, I was interested at one time, but, you know, I talked to you at the ball game for five minutes and that's why I'm here, to learn more about it.
Does anyone have their letter with them?
I haven't heard talk to you anymore since then. So I wanna know kind of what's going on.
Yeah. It'll run, we've got it fixed where they would run and hit every property owner tied to it that's out there. I knew there was one, didn't, one or two that didn't want it, but from the ones I talked to and heard from, it was that they had the numbers.
So coming Monday, if we, if there's six of us that vote now, then the other six that vote...
Y'all, y'all don't have a vote Monday.
Monday, Monday would just be a first reading.
Monday would be the first reading.
We're gonna go ahead and start with the proceedings to see if we can do it.
And then it takes a petition.
It's a second reading and then y'all would have to get a petition saying, what is it, six out of eleven don't want?
Takes fifty percent on the petition.
When can we get that petition?
You don't have to write it. Well, after the first reading.
In the first reading?
That answer my question?
It's Monday, the twentieth.
So one thing we may look at, I'm sitting here with a million dollars and we've got grants for all this, and if they don't want it, we're losing a million dollars.
Well, it sounds like there's a lot of people that need it.
I know it doesn't work that way with the government.
If you get a grant, it can only be, like, if you get a grant for, say, a basketball court, it can only be used on the basketball court. It can't be taken and moved over and used on a tennis court or at the, our baseball field. It can't. It's only for that specific thing.
And your address.
How do we get a grant for our water issues then?
And your address is out there, that's where the grant's written. We can't move it to another address.
It's not just right there.
I know, but I'm just, you've asked, I told you.
So my understanding is somebody came to y'all, said they wanted this.
I don't necessarily like it anymore than we do.
And then y'all went and found a grant.
I'm sorry?
So that's my understanding, right?
Oh, we always look for grants, so we don't have to pay for it. No offense.
Well, I know that, because my, my thing was, somebody came to y'all, said they wanted this.
Said they wanted this grant, yes.
Well, we thought the majority hadn't wanted it.
Yeah, because I, from ones we've talked to, and we thought the majority wanted it and that's why we pursued.
Who's your grant through, what agency?
Federal government, and there's two of them through the state.
Means like a Herschel grant?
It's a what?
It's like a Herschel grant or what, what division of the government is now?
This is all through Department of Interior, ARPA funds.
Yeah.
And then the state or what they call Senate Bill thirty-five, thirty-six funds.
Because I, I was watching most of your grants, you could live ten percent of those funds at wheeling.
Not these. Yeah. Not these. Yeah. These are set up totally different because it's through the ARPA funds, through COVID funding.
Yeah, ARPA's different than the regular, like, government grants too.
This is all unusual funding that came about just because of the COVID situation.
And Tina, did you say you didn't get a letter?
I got a letter. I just received it Friday, which the vote, the way I understood the letter was, the vote was happening Monday and I came up to the city hall and I was asking questions. And then they called Larry and he told me to come to this meeting. Because I had questions and nobody could answer them. And so, and that's where all this, where, where I'm coming from. I just, I wanted to know why I was being annexed when I had this farm that we're working on. I just, I don't understand it.
It would still come in as farm. I mean, it's not, it would still be a farm. It's not, that doesn't change.
The farm won't be taxed, will it?
Well, it's...
Arms taxed.
But it's taxed.
Luckily.
I, I think, going from memory, your tax bill was gonna be less than a hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's, yeah, for the...
Property tax.
For property tax, yeah.
Why, why ours make so much less than existing?
Houses, residential, farm land has, farm land is a different animal state of Kentucky. Farm land is...
Yeah, your house would be going under the same thing like my house is here in Beaver Dam. It would be under the same principle of mine. It's so much for...
Well, how much is your taxes a year?
Good gosh. Oh, how much do I pay? Here in the city, I think I pay like three sixty-seven or something. I'm thinking for...
Do you get a homestead discount?
No, I do not. I wish I did.
Three sixty-seven? I lived in the county and I paid a whole lot more.
Oh, yeah. My county taxes are over a thousand dollars.
Okay, my one too, for many years.
City taxes are like three sixty-seven or four, maybe it's four sixty-seven.
Oh, you're just talking one piece of your taxes.
No, my house in Beaver Dam, which is right up here on Fourth Street, is, I think I pay over a thousand dollars for county taxes. I pay about four sixty-seven or three sixty-three.
Is that based on the property value?
Yeah, it's based on certain matters.
Not, it's not property value, it's assessed value.
Yeah, city tax, if I get away with county taxes, I could just pay city tax, I'd be in heaven.
I thought, wait a minute. I've, I've been ripped off.
You're still gonna have to pay the high taxes over at courthouse on your farm.
Well, yeah.
Because I pay a ton of taxes on farm, county tax.
I get that, but that's when you want to increase the taxes.
But again, but what we're saying, the city, the farm land in the city is only gonna be about, like you said, about a hundred dollars a year. It's all it's gonna be. It's, it's cheap.
That's a lot of you.
I agree. I agree.
I mean, you're talking a tax that aren't, we don't need because we have a separate taxes.
Well, uh, do you pay, do you pay firedues?
I've always paid firedues.
Do you pay firedues? You don't pay firedues if it's annexed in the city?
Well, I don't, I don't like to pay firedues.
I know, I'm just saying, there are, there are pros and cons to it. I agree, but I'm just saying, there are good things and bad things to it too. So I mean, you don't just gotta, certain things. That was just one of the things I, you know, do.
What about land animals out there? Are they gonna be allowed to stay out there or what? Animals? I mean, there's horses, chickens, dogs.
No chickens, no.
I won't go by hundreds more.
I won't come by on it tomorrow.
Not out there.
No, the horses is a grandfather in.
Okay, any other live, domestic animals that are out there will be grandfathered in if this goes through?
So everything the way our house is, it gets grandfathered in?
Should be grandfathered in. Unless there's some.
Am I, are we wrong on that?
You ain't got exotic pets, do you?
I know the city ordinance for a city.
Vernon Shirley.
And you can't, you can't classify your wife as an.
County attorney, you said it's grandfathered in, so there you go. The city attorney, I'm gonna tell you, can't.
If this gets, for whatever occasion, it's gonna take effect, right?
Or that there'll be a final vote. It's like, there, it was, my misunderstanding that that, it sounded like it was gonna be decided upon on the twentieth.
No, that's.
No, that's, no, that's just what we're having first week.
Okay.
Of the annexation order, and then you get another letter that explains the whole process.
And Paul, I know you talk to a lot of us, and I understand the, the frustration with the, thank you people on board, thank people not on board, but after we got these letters and more we've, we've said, talked about it, you're saying basically, I'll count our property, there's ten other properties, say everybody gets four hundred dollars in taxes a year. That's four thousand dollars that us ten are paying per year on top of whatever the sewer is per house, because I, I feel like that in the long run would cost more than, than fixing a sewer or a septic system here and there depending on the homeowner's situation.
The problems you're gonna run into, and it's just gonna, it's gonna happen, it may be next year, it may be ten years from now, but you're gonna start seeing more crackdowns on septic systems. That's just, uh, nature of the beast right now with what they're doing with all the, uh, clean water, all the environmental.
Crackdowns and what?
If you have a septic problem, the health department will come in and you'll have to fix it.
Well, yeah, they'll have to fix it. The homeowner always has to fix it.
Sometimes there's no way to fix a septic, and that's, they're getting harder and harder. I see this in, for someone with this Kentucky League of Cities, a lot of cities were starting to see this with, especially in more urban areas where people are coming in, the health departments are coming in, it's like, we're gonna have to do something. You're gonna have to, and some of those get expensive with the systems they require now because of all of the issues with coming to the top.
Here's, here's my other question. If this passes, these lines get run, if we don't wanna tie into it, that, we're not gonna do it for that, are we? For that service?
No, no. Yeah, you can be, you can be, you'd be taxed, but you're.
It'll be there, it'll be there available to you.
That's where I got the concept of, I got the option. That's where it was like, I could opt out of, you know what I'm talking about? Then I'd have to tie into it.
Yeah, you don't have to tie into it.
I just leaned my septic tank and done all kinds of things. Um.
I mean, because we're at it right now, if, if you tie into these septic lines, it's gonna cost you whatever it costs to run from your septic to over here. How much of a bill each month are we talking about if you tie into that septic?
It's all based on your water bill, water usage.
Well, I mean, all ours are different. We're on county water, obviously, and.
I know, but we've got some others like that, though, and that we get a reading from the county on what your water usage is.
What, what's the, what idea do you have, like a range?
What's your, what's your water usage? You don't mean gallon?
Well, if I don't.
How much?
Cool water a year.
So whatever the minimum is, or thirty-seven?
Yours is minimum?
Thirty-seven.
It's about thirty-six, forty-five.
Yeah, thirty-seven, something like that.
What is the minimum of sewer?
I was gonna say.
Is it maybe six gallons?
That's how, that's how your sewer bill would be calculated, would be on your usage.
Could you give us an example, say, fifty-five thousand gallons?
It's two thousand.
Ours is two thousand gallon minimum in the city.
So if calories, what would the septic be?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, so basically, what I'm understanding is the, the average minimum is about two thousand gallons, which is what.
What would you like to take, or two thousand gallons, too?
Siri's decided to get involved with this.
Thanks, Siri.
All right, so what, what would that septic run on, basically, on two thousand gallons?
I can give you an idea, because we're annexed at Mother Anne behind Wendy's.
Okay.
So we have the city, um, we have the two bills, the water and the sewer, and you imagine we wash fifty kids' hands five thousand times a day, so it's high water usage bathroom, and that bill for us is only about a hundred bucks a month, and that's a lot of water usage.
How many gallons?
So it's small home, I wouldn't.
I was, that's.
So how much is your sewer?
That's what I'm saying.
That's a sewer bill.
Not my water bill.
I can, once they go in close session, I can go and run a few examples. I can, I can do an example.
Shelby, our minimum water bill is how much right now? Our middle, water sewer is six?
Water, sewer, and sanitation right now, four people, and city limits, with the line insurance is fifty-seven seventy-five. Without the line insurance, it's fifty-three ninety-five. That's water, sewer, and sanitation.
So you take the.
So I'll, I'll look at one today, and if it was eighty dollars without the water.
Well, it's, it's dependent on the water usage.
No, without the water.
Yeah, but still, it's still dependent on the water usage. That's why I'm saying, our minimum bill is, what'd you say, fifty, fifty?
Fifty-seven seventy-five for two thousand gallons, usage of water and sewer.
So you take.
As long as the whole bill, listen.
That'd be about, that's what I'm trying to back out. You take the three out, that'd get it down to fifty-four, and then you take the sanitation office, about forty-one. So probably your sewers will over half, so probably about twenty-three or four dollars for minimum.
Yeah, I think it's maybe like twenty-three eighty-eight.
I have a question for you. What's the, what's it called, the, the insurance line? Is that thirty?
That is thirty, the city.
We self, we self-insure.
That's our water line, I would.
Yeah, that's water. You generally don't have problems with sewer lines once they're hooked up, or water line leaks, or breaks and whatnot.
So could we get an example? I mean, of, say, fifty-five thousand usage, gallons usage?
No, Lord, you won't use fifty-five thousand.
Wow, that's a lot of water.
Yeah.
Fifty-five thousand. Oh, you use fifty-five thousand gallon. But five thousand gallon, that's what, that's what Dycell uses a month. Isn't it about five thousand?
That's a huge amount. No, five thousand's not Dycell.
No.
Okay, then I got it wrong. I'm like him, I switched my number.
So could it be, um, fifty-five thousand?
Yes, I, I mean, I can bring it.
Do you know what your gallon usage is?
I thought it was fifty-five thousand, but it is fifty-five thousand.
I was saying, you said fifty-five thousand, whoa, spilling swimming pool every week, okay?
Well, fifty-five hundred, well, no, I can't even do that. I was gonna say, if you're six, it'd be about a, your water, sewer and everything would be about a hundred and some dollars, and take minus, minus, and then a little over half that, so.
I'll run it there.
Here's my last question. If, if this goes, and this is all of the people that this goes through, and all this, just, you don't go ahead, do, will we have city pickup on trash?
Yeah.
I don't know about y'all, but you just wore six bags a week, so.
It's still six bags. You have to.
Well, we, we, well, we make, if there's something. Put them in the, put them in the big bags, that's what, we.
Yeah, I ain't got time for that. Penny picks up a hundred for twenty bucks a month.
Is that for residence only commercial, can't get city trash pickup?
Well, we've got, we've, do we have any commercials? We've got a few. It'd be something separate.
Oh, we said earlier, it's gonna be about a million dollar profit.
I, I looked at a, I looked at a tax, what they paid on it, and theirs was, you know, it was five hundred and something dollars. I'm not gonna say it is. They asked me not to. And they are over sixty-five, so they said they give it a discount. So why would theirs be five hundred if you're saying ours would be around three?
Based on the PVA value, assessed value.
Well, it's assessment, I was like fifty thousand.
Then it, not five hundred dollars.
Oh, there's no way.
Oh, I've got a picture of it. Yeah, it is.
Not on a fifty thousand.
It's only, it's what, one percent?
Mine's not that much, for my house.
So a fifty thousand dollars.
Well, my mom paid three hundred and thirty-seven, and they took forty thousand off the value of their home, because they get that discount.
The sixty-five is discounted?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So how much would a two hundred thousand dollar home appraisal be assessed at?
I've lost my count.
You have this bad, I gotta have that.
Two hundred thousand dollar home, six hundred dollars?
Oh, my God, that's the city own tax. Where did it, how much?
Six hundred.
It's a whole lot more than that, and all the different taxes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know.
I don't think yours is assessed for two hundred.
No, I'm just using as an.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good round number, because.
But a two thousand, what would it assess for, though? That's what I'm saying. You said it would be quite a bit less than what it would appraise for.
Yeah.
So.
How's PVA take you there?
PVA, well, I've looked them all up at one time, and I think, I don't think anybody's would've been over three, thirty or forty, maybe three fifty. I'm going from memory, so don't hold me to that, but.
I want somebody to hold you to.
Well, I can, I can. No, I can, I go back and look up on PVA and get your exact, and I can tell you exactly what your city taxes would be.
I mean, because, that's a little different for me, because I think it's gonna be a thousand, close to a thousand.
Mine, mine.
Is your county taxes a thousand?
Close to it, yeah.
Yeah, it'd be.
About a third.
It's gonna say about a third, maybe less.
But see, that don't add up to the, to the one I know about. I mean, I don't know where everybody lives in Beaver Dam, so I can't call them, but I can look online, and